Yeah, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order at 6:30 PM. Committee was in executive session for the purpose of discussing NREA negotiations and administrative and personnel matters, and we are back. So, for the record, all of the school committee members are here right now. We are also joined by our superintendent and both assistant superintendents. Welcome, everybody. And as always, we will begin with public input. If anybody on the call does have a question or something they would add into public comment that is not on the agenda, please feel free to unmute yourself or type your name into the chat, and we will call on you. Give you a moment if you could do that. Okay. Hearing is not at this time, we will move on. Typically, we have a student report, but my understanding is should be circumstances at a softball game right now, so hopefully North Reading is doing well. That means we will go directly into the agenda. We'll skip, we always skip around a little bit. We'd like to deal with our guests first, and we are honored today to have the Bachelor School here with their new principal, Mr. Maloney. And I will turn it over to Mr. Maloney for the Bachelor School presentation.
Well, thank you so very much for inviting us tonight. I have quite a few friends and guests and colleagues here with me tonight to help me with this presentation, just to highlight some of the great work that the Bachelor School continues to do, even with the new principal. Before I forget, I'd like to thank all my volunteers tonight. We have a number of students, and I'll allow their faculty advisors to introduce them into what they're going to present to you tonight. I'm certainly not here to steal the show or talk too much. I'd much prefer to let the students of the Bachelor School do the talking in the presentation. So, I think we'll get right into it. We have a good, I think, cross-section, a good variety of grade levels and activities and events and some recognition of the good work that we're doing here. So, without further ado, I am going to introduce Mrs. Reynolds, a kindergarten teacher here at the Bachelor School, to talk to us about the Cookie Monster 100th Day of School Celebration. So, Mrs. Reynolds, I'll let you take it over.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Maloney. Hi, everyone. I'm Debbie Reynolds, and I'm a kindergarten teacher here at the Bachelor School. And as any kindergarten teacher can tell you and any student, that the 100th day of school is a big deal. This year, being a little different, I still wanted to make the day special for the kindergartners and reach out to our North Reading community and support them as well. So, I thought the food pantry project was an ideal project to attempt to do. After coordinating the dates and the times with my kindergarten team, Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Colman and Mrs. Brown, and with Mr. Malone, both, and with Teresa at the North Reading Food Pantry, we were often cleaning. We decided on cookie mixes, since that's what the pantry was low on. It worked out perfectly. Our goal was to count and count 100 cookie mixes for our 100 days. However, through the generosity of all the kindergarten families, we were able to donate 143 cookie mixes, which was awesome. We also made a literacy connection to this project by reading the book, Maddie's Fridge. It's the story of two friends, one who was struggling to keep food in her refrigerator and put food on the table, and how her other friend's family helps out. So, the cookie parade was just the perfect way to end this project, and we all marched up Puyanee Street and downhill street to the North Reading Food Pantry. So, it was a really nice experience for all the teachers and the pantry, while the kids were full of food. And because it was such a success, I would really hope to do it again next year. So, I want somebody to come up here and share their experience with you. Come on up, Sam. Have a seat. I can hear.
It was nice.
Take your mask off, honey. We're good.
Hi, I'm Sam. We, there were so many different types of cookie mixes donated. We lined them up in the hallway and went to the camp by ones, fives, and tens. It was nice to take a walk to the food pantry and help people.
Oh, that was great, Sam. Come on up, Max. Next is Max. Tell me who you are, Max.
Hi, my name is Max. All the kindergarten classes walked together to the food pantry, and Mr. Maloney walked with us, too. Officer Lucci escorted us in his cruiser. One thing I wondered was where the food pantry was. I was happy to take a picture because it was.
Excellent, Max. Come on up, Addison. There you go, my dear. Take your mask off, so we can see your face and you can talk.
Hi, my name is Addison. I like putting the cookie mix in the donation box. It was good that we could, uh, honey.
Yeah.
Everyone loves cookies.
You're right, Addison. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reynolds. That was, that was great. It was really a fun morning. It was, I think, our first field trip, technically, that the school had had since last year, so it was nice to get the kindergarten students up and out and walk up to the food pantry and to provide a little service for the community. So, Mrs. Reynolds was awesome organizing that, and our students and families did a great job collecting those cookie mixes. So, thank you, Mrs. Reynolds, and to all of our kindergarten students. Next up, we have Mrs. Tina Boric, who's a grade five teacher and also a science curriculum coordinator on K5, and she's going to present the Cambridge Science Festival Curiosity Challenges. Miss Boric.
Good evening, everyone. Over February vacation, several Bachelor School students took it upon themselves to participate in the 2021 Curiosity Challenge sponsored by MIT. Students submitted a drawing, a poem, a photograph of what they are curious about, and explained how it prompted them to explore the world. There were 2,500 entries from the United States, Spain, and Argentina. The following students are the Curiosity Challenge Award winners here at the Bachelor School. Tanya D. from grade two, Mrs. Catherine Faes' class; Riley B., grade three, in Mrs. Nicole D. Donato's class; and Charlotte M., grade five, in my class. The students would like to share their winning project with you. First up is Charlotte.
Um, you can sit down, Charlotte. I wrote down a poem. Why are humans intelligent? Why are we smart? How do we create work? How did we discover we all have a heart? Why did we build houses that reach oh-so-high? How did we build rockets pointed up at the sky? Why are we intelligent? Because you see, no other species can count to three.
Next up is Riley from grade three.
Hi, my name is Riley Borkaski. I'm in third grade at the Bachelor School. The question I asked that became one of the Curiosity Challenge winners is how were different languages around the world created? I chose to participate in the Curiosity Challenge because I've always been curious about many things. I decided to ask this question because I wondered how people communicate. I realized that all people communicate in different ways, and so I wondered how all of these different ways created. I came up with the idea to look hello in many different languages on the page because I wanted to represent the different languages around the world. I searched up all the different ways to say hello on the internet for the Curiosity Challenge project.
And finally, our last winner is Tanya. She's in grade two.
Hello, my name is Tanya, and my question was, why do planets have different gravity? Me and my brother are curious about space.
Take off your mask, please.
Me and my brother are curious about space. My question was, why do planets have different gravity? Next year, I'm going to ask, what are the stems of creation? I learned that from an online game called Adventure Academy. The stems of creation are surrounded by hydrogen, oxygen, and nitrogen.
Thank you to all our participants and, of course, to our winners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boric. I just pause here in case anyone had any questions for any of our students or for their faculty advisors on this.
Any questions? I think it's great. I mean, for winning, do they, do they get to do anything? Do they get a certificate? Do they, I'm always curious about, about the contest itself.
I believe they all got a certificate, and I also, Ms. Boric can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe their names are in a book. Mrs. Boric?
Yes, so we were told upon winning that the books will be distributed to the school, one for the school and one for each winner. And within that book are all the entries that were awarded, an award, so they will get to see all of the other winners that came from the United States, Spain, and Argentina when they receive their book.
I thought it was an interesting mix, US, Argentina, and Spain.
Yes, exactly. I don't know why. I'm not sure if it was something that was put out to all the countries or just those three, but yes, that was an interesting observation as well, I thought. But this came to me via Dr. Daly and then also Mr. Maloney sent it along, and we put it out to the teachers, and the kids decided to do it over February vacation. It was a short window, so that in itself, the kids that decided to do it, I think, was a great thing for them to take this on.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Boric. It's really great that our students participated in winning. It's even better. And as you could see, there was three different, it was a drawing there, there was a poem, and there was a question about languages, which is a nice segue into our presentation that Ms. Lindsay is going to coordinate here about the Universal Design for Learning and the work that's been going on over the past few years and specifically this year at the Bachelor School. So, Ms. Lindsay, I'll turn it over to you, who is in our TV studio, I'm the anchor, and Ms. Lindsay's live in the TV studio.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Lindsay, and Caitlin Tully and I are the school's Universal Design for Learning mentors. I think we're getting a little feedback, if we can mute everyone. Sorry, we're hearing some feedback in here. Before the teachers and students present, we thought it might be helpful to give a short history of this initiative at our school. We're in year three of the district's UDL initiative. The teachers here have quickly embraced this professional development opportunity. In a nutshell, UDL is pinpointing barriers to learning in our classrooms and then doing our best to remove them. It's also helping students take ownership of their learning so they can figure out how they learn best. We read a common book all three years. Additionally, during the first year of the initiative, we had 12 teachers who learned UDL strategies, created lesson plans using these strategies, and had the opportunity to observe fellow participants teaching these lessons. During the second year, our participation skyrocketed, and we had 23 teachers sign up, and we split them between a UDL 200 and a UDL 100 level group. The UDL 200 level group participated in a video club, and teachers volunteered to have lessons incorporating UDL recorded, and then our group watched the lessons and provided feedback to these teachers. I know we'd all love to give a shout-out to Emily Platt. She's our district UDL coach, and she's been such a valuable resource. We also thank Dr. Daly and the district for giving us this coaching opportunity. It has been so helpful to have an expert to turn to as we move forward with UDL each year, and she's improved our teaching by showing us how to bring these strategies into our classroom. Every grade-level team has at least one teacher, and most have many teachers on their teams who have participated in this PD. This has been so important, as these teachers can make sure that we're using the UDL framework when teams are designing and teaching lessons. This year, Caitlin and I weren't sure how many teachers would sign up to continue this work, as teachers had so much on their plate this year. We were so excited when 18 teachers signed up for a book study. We were also excited when Carrie Kalanen, one of the teachers here, shared that she found a book for us to read to bring together our UDL work with this year's district's Social Justice and Equity Professional Practice Goal. Carrie has been a co-facilitator for this book study, and I'm going to pass the microphone to her to share more about it.
Hi, there. Thanks, Chris. I'm Carrie Kalanen. I'm the occupational therapist at the Bachelor School. And as Chris mentioned, you know, the UDL framework, it's really about equality, equity, and expert learning. So, I, in, you know, the connection of equality, not everyone benefits from the same supports. And equity, we can remove barriers by providing adequate supports based on variability. And also, you know, the goal of the UDL framework is to create expert learners. And expert learners, you know, it's basically when students are purposeful, motivated, resourceful, knowledgeable, strategic, and goal-oriented. So, as Chris mentioned, when we were asked to come up with a social justice goal, I really made the connection between UDL and social justice. And I did search a little bit, and I came up with the book Equity by Design, and it's really intended to serve as a blueprint for teachers. You can see it's by Merko Charoden and Katie Novak. The book really does connect critical link between social justice, excuse me, and universal design for learning. And so, throughout the 2021 school year, Chris mentioned, we had over 20 participants, and we just continued to increase our understanding of the tenants of UDL, and then again, as they relate to equity and social justice. We were able to create a book study group, and through a Google Classroom, we were synchronously and asynchronously. And as Chris mentioned, Emily Platt, our UDL mentor, she was able to facilitate two meetings with us and, you know, really share some great strategies. And as a group on the, within the Google Classroom, we came up with questions, we answered questions, we tried to demonstrate UDL in letting people, you know, do a video or writing or drawing, and then even took it a step further, instead of the UDL mentors and myself coming up with a question, letting the teachers or participants come up with questions. So, the authors do encourage us, you know, or remind us, I guess, that we're all imperfect, we all need to grow, and basically, we're all doing the best we can so that we can be the best we can be. But, you know, within the book, we talk about creating great spaces, which is really minimizing threats and distractions for students. We've worked hard within UDL to move the own voice and let students to use their voice. So, basically, you know, we do want to celebrate and embrace really elevated identity and, again, variability. So, here to show UDL in action and demonstrate, we have teachers, third-grade teachers, Carrie Gavin and Heather Quokko.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carrie Gavin. I teach third grade here at the batch, and myself, along with Heather Quokko, are going to talk a little bit about UDL in the classroom. First and foremost, this is a picture that Emily Platt had used in one of her workshops with us at the very beginning of the year. She used the metaphor of teaching this year as a lighthouse, and it reads, "UDL is about being the trusted lighthouse for our students, ready to share our light in all types of weather, providing them with support to be the captains of their own journey." And I thought that was really a great quote and something that I think of often when we navigate this year together. So, first and foremost, UDL also connects not only to social justice, but also to that social, emotional learning space. And one of the main takeaways for me was creating a space this year for all students to minimize those barriers, to really hone in on our own identities and what we bring to our classroom. And this has definitely been a challenge this year, especially in the beginning, when we had some students in front of us, some at home, some at home all the time, so really focusing on how to create that community when we're all in different settings. Something that we did at the very beginning of the year, we filled out these surveys, back-to-school emotions. Students were presented with a bunch of different emojis, and as you can see to the left of my slide, how do you feel about being back to school, distance learning, your grade level, your teacher, your classmates, and school overall? And so, the responses that we got were a variety. We had some kids loving being in school, some kids loving distance learning, and some kids just wanting to be back, but it really allowed us as teachers to kind of see where the kids are at and being able to check in with them and provide that support. Also, two morning meetings, something that I love every year, doing every year, and it's definitely been a little bit different this year. We can't come sit on the rug together, we can't high-five and do things like that, but I think it's important to recognize that we can still create that community even remotely. So, the top part, what says, "Yay, it's Friday." This is just an example of something that I put up on my board every morning, as a way for students to come in and see what to expect on the day ahead. And Ms. Quokko's going to talk a little bit more about the morning meetings here, but on Tuesday and Thursday, I'm going to focus on sharing with the SCL in mind. So, I tried something that I learned from Emily Platt in one of our workshops. She presented the teachers with this reading scale that you can see to the right, and it says, "On a scale of one to nine," sorry, excuse me, "on a one-to-nine, sorry, I can't read that still, no, on a one-to-nine on a rubber duck scale, where are you at today?" And this is something that the teachers filled out, and it was really fun to kind of see, and I thought, hey, why not try this with my students? I wasn't sure how they would feel about this, like even that option, that choice, you can show me on your fingers where you are. If you want to share it with the class, where you are, you are one, feeling nice and great this morning, or you kind of a five, kind of so-so. And I was really surprised at what they shared, that, you know, who had a, the alarm didn't go off, and they had trouble sleeping the night before, so they're really tired this morning. And it's also neat to hear that some kids, you know, were looking forward to vacation or, you know, looking forward to that half-day to get them through the week. So, it was really neat to kind of see where they are coming in emotionally and to be able to support them along with that. And then lastly, at the bottom is a book, Our Class of the Family. This is a book that a teacher recommended during our workshop, and we read it at the beginning of the year, and then again, when all the kids came back to the classroom, really hones in on bringing our differences into the classroom. And yes, we are all different, and we have different hobbies and interests, but we're all here to help each other, to support one another, so really creating that space for students to share their ideas and their opinions as well. And then this other side, as Ms. Lindsay had noted, building student independence and ownership of their learning. So, a couple examples here are breakout rooms. This was such a great tool to use for remote learning. We had students break off from a whole-class lesson into breakout rooms, and it really allowed them to be independent learners, working with each other. I tried to mix up a little bit and have a cohort A friend with a cohort B friend, so that they're able to see each friends in other classes. It was a really great way for them to work on assignment with a partner or partners, and also allowing them that choice. So, after a mini lesson, allowing students to choose to, if they want to do it with a teacher, if they want to do the activity with a partner, or if they want to do it independently, so allowing them to make that choice. Also, in the middle, science experiments with our No-Atom Curriculum. It's really great where you can, given a challenge or a problem to solve and given certain materials, and it's up to you and your team to figure out how you want to solve that. And so, this example was from last week. Students were in charge of creating a skyscraper with five levels. They were given a couple of materials to work with, and they kind of just went to town using whatever they would like, so it was really neat to see, giving them those options and making those decisions. And then after, we had a little debrief or reflection with highs and lows. We called it Rose and Thorns, something that went really well, and then a thorn or something, a challenge, or something that you would improve for next time. Lastly, I have here an example of a checklist that we use during writing. This is a narrative writing checklist that we will preview with the students ahead of time, so they know exactly what is expected of that assignment, and something to bring back at the end to make sure they have everything they need, so an independent tool to make sure they have everything for writing. I'm going to pass the mic over to Ms. Quokko, who will talk a little bit more about UDL. Thank you.
What's up, everyone? So, I'm going to continue the conversation about the connection between UDL and SCL, and we're going to move into funds of knowledge. Funds of knowledge is just another way of saying, what do the kids know? What can the kids bring from their own home life, from their backgrounds? And how can we, as teachers, incorporate that into our own curriculum and everyday learning? So, one example that you see, as Ms. Gavin had pointed out, was our morning meetings. And one way that I have done this is by using Jamboard. It's been really, really fun. Kids get to express their answers in so many different ways. Some of them have used pictures, some of them have just done it in writing, as you can see in this example. The question that I had posed was, what are you looking forward to most about April vacation? Now, this is a very basic question that we can ask students, and many of them, as you can see, one student was very excited to sleep, and that's very, very prominent right in there, but there was so much other knowledge that we could get from this. One of the post-it notes included looking at a meteor shower over April vacation, which I had no knowledge of. So, then I was able to connect with that student after the April vacation and get that emotional connection with that student, but also I can use that knowledge in my future lessons if we are talking about meteor showers or maybe space as a general topic. So, I can look to that student as the expert and bring their input into my own lessons. Another example, we just started talking about the American Revolution. The kids are very, very excited to learn about this. As you can see from this one photo of the student holding the lantern and pretending to be Paul Revere. I had started this from getting to know, I wanted to know what the kids already knew about the American Revolution. Kids come in with so much different knowledge, so much different background on these different topics, including American Revolution, and this one student had such a love for American history, especially the American Revolution, and he had expressed that he had a Paul Revere hat, so of course, I'm going to let him wear it when we're starting to talk about Paul Revere. So, I was able to create this lesson hook and get the kids excited, because one of their students had a, I'm going to put funny hat, but in this sense, we were talking about how it was very fashionable at this time to wear this type of hat. We went into the history about it, and then we went into talking about Paul Revere, Concord and Lexington. So, it was a really great segue into the lesson, and then I could also incorporate the knowledge of one of my students and keep them engaged, which goes into my next section. So, the last section that I'm going to talk about is student engagement. One project that Ms. Lindsay has started with, the third-grade classes, is called a Passion Project, and it's a great way to keep kids focused on the task at hand, because they get to choose what they want to learn about most. So, a couple students picked, so one student picked one about horses, another one picked one about pit bulls, another about, just a lot of different animals, actually. I was very surprised, we have a lot of animal lovers in my class. So, they were able to do some research on PebbleGo, and they get to make a book about what they enjoy the most, what are they passionate about, and that keeps them engaged, and you can see it, but you can also hear it at the same time. You can hear a pin drop. It is amazing. And then at the top right corner, I created a virtual classroom to go along with our Wampanoag unit, which was really, really exciting, because it was, for so many of them, unknown territory. Many of them didn't have a lot of that background, so I wanted to make sure I'm giving them as much knowledge as possible, keeping them engaged throughout the lesson. So, we had a photo focus, we got to look at different artifacts as photos, and then also keeping it as a virtual or a digital copy of the textbook along with a paper copy of the textbook, to make sure that we were all on the same page, especially in a hybrid learning model. And then in the bottom right corner, I wanted to know what kids got from the, from the unit, from the Wampanoag unit as an example, because student input is so important when we're looking at what kids want to learn about and to keep them engaged throughout the, throughout the day and various lessons. So, in this, I was able to have kids reflect, because reflection is such a big part of UDL, and I want to make sure that kids are given that time to reflect on their learning and give me the So I wanted to make sure I'm giving them as much knowledge as possible, keeping them engaged throughout the lesson. So we had a photo focus, we got to look at different artifacts as photos, and then also keeping it as a virtual or a digital copy of the textbook along with a paper copy of the textbook to make sure that we were all on the same page, especially in a hybrid learning model. And then in the bottom right corner, I wanted to know what kids got from the, from the unit, from the Wampanoag unit as an example. Because student input is so important when we're looking at what kids want to learn about and to keep them engaged throughout the day and various lessons. So in this, I was able to have kids reflect because reflection is such a big part of UDL. And I want to make sure that kids are given that time to reflect on their learning and give me the feedback that I need to make learning as meaningful as possible for them. And that's really what UDL is all about. And that kind of goes into some student work that I want to go into next. The fourth grade students. Ms. Johnson is going to introduce them and they're going to talk about their work with UDL. And I'm so excited to see what they have to bring.
Thanks, Heather. Good evening, my name is Lori Johnson. I'm a fourth grade teacher here at the Bachelor School. And this fall, during hybrid learning, the fourth graders read The Trumpet of the Swan by E.B. White. And even though most fourth graders are working on their independent reading stamina, they still all love to be read to. Read alouds provide us the opportunity to discuss important story elements like plot and character development. And they also give us a chance as teachers to model how we think while we're reading because that's what we try to pass off to the kids, that reading isn't just reading the words, but it's thinking and making connections. So at the end of our reading of the book, we, as teachers, wanted to come up with some type of culminating activity where the students could demonstrate their knowledge of the story and at the same time use their own strengths and learning styles. So we created a couple of slides, which ended up being a choice board and a hyper doc. You can go head on to the next one. Thanks. And so they had two different, there was two different slides here. And within the story, they had different projects to choose from. One that connected to social studies, one with science, one was a STEAM activity, one was geography, a writing and illustrating one, and then a poetry and music for performing one as well. So all of these projects related to the story. And you said you couldn't click on it, Chris? Okay, so we can't click on the links here and show you. But within the slides, there's links. And keeping in mind that the students were only in school at this time, you know, two and a half days, everything they needed to complete this project successfully was in the slides. So they would click on the link of the project they decided they wanted to do. And that would bring them to a page that explained the project, gave directions, expectations. And then on the second page of each project, there was a model where it showed the students what a finished project of that would look like. And then on the third page, there was a rubric where the students could use as a checklist and also see how the project would be created. Once the students finished everything, we came in and we shared. Everybody was their own expert. And for students who don't like to share in front of the class, we gave them the choice to record themselves from home on Seesaw and then we watched it. And once the whole thing was over, we had a reflection piece that the students did on Seesaw, which just gave them a few minutes to reflect on the project, tell us their feelings about it, and then also give us as teachers feedback and data so that we can, again, make any improvements to increase student engagement for the following year if we do this project again. So without further ado, I'm going to call on my first fourth grader here, Vaughn, from Mrs. Hewitt's classroom. And he is going to share his project that he chose, which was the science project.
Hi, my name is Vaughn. The Trumpet of the Swan project that I chose was a science animal research. I chose this project because I like science and love learning about animals. In the story, one of the characters, Sam Beaver, wrote a long funny poem about many kinds of animals. Sam, who was Lewis's swan's loyal friend, loved wildlife and finally decided he wanted to be a zookeeper when he grew up. I researched the kinkajew, which I had never heard of before. The kinkajew is a small nocturnal mammal. It looks like a monkey but is related to ringtails and raccoons. The kinkajew is sometimes called a honey bear. This is because it loves honey and uses its long skin tongue to retrieve honey from beehives. It also likes to snack on termites, small mammals, and fruit. The kinkajew lives in tropical rainforests and has a prehensile tail that is used for balance and also to hang from while snuggling with other kinkajews. I enjoyed having many different choices to complete for the project. I got to choose the one I was most interested in teach my classmates all about the kinkajew.
All right, great job, Vaughn, thank you. Okay, thank you, Vaughn. Next, we have Arden Rudloff, who I think is reading from home. Arden, are you there? Oh, there she is. Okay, and she chose, she's here in a picture with one of our classmates. And she chose the STEAM activity and she's going to tell you what she did.
Hello, my name is Arden Rudloff. For the fourth grade Trumpet of the Swan project, I chose the STEAM activity. I chose this one because I really enjoy doing arts and crafts. I made the four objects that Lewis carried with him. His possessions included a trumpet, a slate and chalk pencil, a lifesaving medal, a money bag. I used all kinds of material like wood, glue, pipe cleaner, spray paint, pasta, and wire. Both my mom and dad helped me. The final part of the project was to create and design one additional object that I thought Lewis would like. I made a diamond ring out of a plastic jewel and wire and then hung it on a ribbon. I thought Lewis would like to give the ring to his one true love, Serena, and she could wear it around her neck.
Okay, thank you, Arden, great job. The kids that chose the STEAM project brought in all of their materials, obviously, and shared with the classmates how they made it, what they made. And then they got the opportunity to design something of their own that connected to the book and they thought that one of the characters would like or use. Okay, and we have one more tonight, our performing project with Lily. And Lily wrote a song. And within the song, she basically outlined the story from beginning, middle, and end. She's only going to sing a short piece of it to you because she actually had probably about six, seven more verses of this. But she wrote it herself and thought of the tune to do it with. And she's going to come over and sing it to us. And Ms. Lindsay here has projected the lyrics. Come on over here, Vaughn. Do you want to stand? You want to stand?
Hi, my name is Lily. I chose to write a song about Trumpet of the Swan for my project using the beat of We Will Rocky by Queen. I chose this project because I love to sing and perform. I chose We Will Rocky because I knew it was a popular song that most people would know. Being able to sing and show what I learned made this summarizing easier for me. I enjoyed being able to be creative while writing my lyrics. Now for the song you've all been waiting for, feel free to clap along. Once upon a time in Canada, there was a young boy named Sam Beaver. He went to a pond, saw some swans. His father didn't even know where he was. Trumpet of the swan. Two swans fell in love, had some cubs. One of them was Lewis, but he had a prop. His voice was weak, he could not speak. So he got a trumpet so he could use his beak. Trumpet of the swan. In the end, everyone was so happy. All the cubs said Lewis was the best daddy. All day long, he'd play them songs. Now it's time to say so long because it's the end of my song. Trumpet of the swan.
Yay! Good job. So as you can see, we had many different talents and many different experts throughout this project. And the students really individualized it and showed their strengths throughout it. So it was a fun activity to do and can't wait to do it again. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. So I guess you can see why I plan to do very little speaking tonight. You know, they say a good leader knows, just get out of the way and let the people shine who shine. And obviously, the work that was presented tonight really highlights some of the fantastic work that our students do, our staff, and, you know, getting the best out of all these students. It's just amazing to watch and amazing to see. So that's our presentation. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them and...
That's wonderful. So I'll just start by thanking all the teachers and also the students. I mean, Lily in particular, I could, I, to this day, couldn't stand up and sing before anybody. Nobody would want me to, but it's amazing. So this is Scott, by the way. Anybody, can you remember comments, questions?
Job well, well done, everyone. I, I'm sorry, this is Janina Briano. It still astounds me that kids are so brave and they just get up and they have no concerns or worries and they deliver such a wonderful performance. And the way that they are learning and the way that they're grasping new ways of learning, I think is incredible, so good job.
And I think just this presentation alone speaks volumes to what we were able to accomplish this year. You know, having people from home, students from home, remote in, and to present, you know, and it just, it allows that choice, it allows that flexibility. I think it just goes along with everything that we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, the fact that Mrs. Lindsay's over there with the teachers and the students and I can be here and kind of facilitate, and you folks are up the hill and, you know, from home, it's just, it's amazing what we've been able to accomplish. And it's truly a testament of our staff, our faculty, our students, their flexibility and their ability to adapt to everything that's been thrown at them. So it's just, you know, it's Teacher Appreciation Weekend. I wrote this morning, I can't stay home. There's no word to show how much I appreciate all the work that's done in our district, in the Bachelor School. It clearly shows with what our students were able to present here tonight. Okay, now what?
This is Diane Aboutwell. I was just going to say, you know, it is Teacher Appreciation Weekend. We certainly appreciate all of you. And I can say that just seeing how, you know, you have that goal of UDL and the creativity into being able to adapt that to the remote environment is just so impressive. And since Colquah, I'm pretty sure when you had that board up there and it said something about what you're going to do in April vacation and it said, looking forward to sleep, I'm pretty sure that was my kid, most likely. But yeah, it was very, very impressive and all the kids, you did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Rich McGowan. I agree with all those comments. I think also it's just been really gratifying to watch over these last three years the progression of the UDL concepts. And, you know, I think we, I think you guys, you know, have worked and it's been a great job implementing that. And it came at just the right time for this school year, adapting the curriculum to this remote environment. And so it's been a great thing to watch over the last three years. So appreciate all that work. And by the way, I'm also really excited that, you know, with the food pantry moving just up the road from you guys, taking advantage of that was a great opportunity. So I was just seeing as well.
Absolutely. Rich?
Thanks. I'll just say two things. First, these nights when we have the presentations from the different schools, particularly the elementary schools, are just the most fun nights of the year for, as a school committee member. It's, I don't know how we can keep doing them. And each time, I'm surprised by the incredible things that the kids can do. But each time, it just takes me and goes, whoa. Like Scott said, I couldn't do, I couldn't do many of the things that the kids did here today. And to echo what Rich and Diane were just saying, the, I think it's a great showcase for both UDL and also just that there are great approaches that teachers can take. And it's wonderful to see kind of the results coming out here and in public. You know, these are kids that were reading a book. And not only were they understanding that book on a deeper level than they might have if they just had to do more traditional, kind of write a paper on this or answer some questions about it, but they got to explore other interests they had and maybe find new passions with that. So I just think it's all fantastic.
And this is Scott again. I'll just say, I mean, for me, I kind of, we see pieces of this in our roles. It's nice to see it kind of all come together. You know, we've heard about UDL for the last couple of years. You know, we know that teachers had, you know, objectives around, you know, remote learning or social justice. And it's just kind of fun to see it all come together. And we talk about things in theory, talk about what's fun. But it's nice to see it come together and, you know, see presentations and see how, you know, teachers are implementing what's there and how kids are adapting to the situations. And, you know, it's really nice. And the only shame is that we're not in person to see people. But the only good thing about that is you can't, you know, show that we can't do any of these things because, you know, every time we do in-person ones, you show how little the school committee can do and, you know, and how fourth graders are better at these things than we are. But, you know, we really appreciate it. You know, Mr. Maloney, I know it's, you know, your first year there, but nice job and thank you to everybody tonight.
Thank you so much.
If you only have some comments as well.
Yeah, just wanted to echo these thoughts here again to our Mr. Maloney and to our teachers who presented. Fantastic job to Ms. Lindsay, who I know also presented, but also helps with all the technology tonight. That's a huge help to students. You were so fantastic, you made us so proud. I loved hearing everything from the raps to the students telling us about their trip and getting to hear the Cambridge Science Festival winners get to present and speak tonight. We had talked about that award meeting or so ago. And it was really great to hear from the students themselves. So thank you, everyone, for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, not, Mr. Clean. Goes with Christmas path. I just wanted to say congratulations. I thought the presentation was absolutely fantastic. It was great to see the students involved both in person. Yep, I can be there too. I'll be here all week. And the UDL work especially is something that we're very proud of in the district and the Bachelor School, the level of involvement, as Chris Lindsay referred to, from the first year to the second year. And then to take on a little bit more this year when it was absolutely necessary. The good news is, as Mr. Buckley says, it is part of our district vision. And all five schools are working very hard. And they gave the appropriate kudos to Emily Pat, who is our UDL coach out of STEAM. I'm actually meeting with her tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. So I'll make sure that she knows that you guys were giving her the kudos. She loves the sunshine, but she loves the work. She brings the passion to reach all students. You were a great representation of that. Nice, thank you all. And Lily McCallum, I think you might be able to challenge Ms. Johnson in your lyric writing. Nice job. Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Whoever would like to stay and hear about the fiscal year budget, you are more than welcome to stay for this. But we will not be insulted if you drop off either. Okay, so I think we're going to move on. And we have on the agenda the school budget vote. We've been doing a lot of work to try to close this gap. And I will turn it over to Mr. Connolly to lead us through where we're at with the school budget and the vote we're going to be able to take.
Great, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So we kind of have a brief presentation this evening that gives an update on the status of the FY '22 school budget. We've certainly been talking about it quite a bit over the last several weeks and months, dating back to the beginning of March. And we're prepared to recommend a vote this evening. I'm happy to report since the last time we were here publicly at the public hearing in the middle of April, certainly a lot has happened with available revenues and the conversation in terms of trying to achieve a balanced budget has gotten a lot easier. And certainly appreciate the efforts by members of the planning team, the town officials, which is the town administrator, the work, the town finance director, and certainly select board members and so forth, that I know have worked hard to think creatively and put their heads together and look at available revenues and available one-time sources and be as strategic as possible to achieve both municipal and school balanced budgets. So and make that effort to do that really as resourceful as possible. So the conversation tonight, I hope, is going to be a lot easier than maybe it could have been or it looked like it was going to be at the public hearing a little, you know, two and a half weeks ago or so. So just as I kind of, just sort of a refresher, the original recommended budget that was made to the school The original recommended budget that was made to the, the community body administration was a budget that was $34,352,117. That was one of the $1.7 million increase, which essentially reflected a 5.4% increase over the fiscal '21 budget. As of today, May 3rd, recently as last week, the revenue plan reflects a budget of $34,276,655. So that's certainly a increase of 5.2%. And our budget gap, which if you go back to the middle of April and we're well over $475,000, is down to $75,452. So this is the list that the administration is recommending. And I know certainly we talked about this at the workshop and various other, other sources. I wanted to present this was publicly this evening. So there is, there is a couple of changes that are required. So the budget, yeah, kind of gets sort of increases before, before the, it balances. But we certainly talked about this at the last meeting and at the public hearing that there was certainly a need to add some additional buses to the fleet of 10 buses currently to align the school start times at both the elementary and secondary level. So we believe that with this change is certainly a positive direction and we can achieve a lot with the addition of two buses to the fleet. So add about $65,000 per bus that adds $130,000 to the budget. Always a moving target in the budget in any, any school, the school budget across the Commonwealth is the auto district tuition line item. So certainly this is a number that certainly changes frequently. But with the current information we have today, there is a need to increase that line by $46,350.
Michael, very quickly, you, on the screen, you're showing the upper page still?
Am I not?
You're not showing.
You're not showing the numbers that you're going over right now, so.
Really? I can't see that. Is one here? Okay.
I might just. And just so we can follow along.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. Try it again. Sure.
You had to open it as a tab. While you're doing that, this is Scott, I'll just comment a little bit of the thing. I'll just thank the town for, you know, the revenue that Mr. Connolly was talking about. A lot, a lot of work was done to, you know, figure out alternative funding for things and really make projections that help both the town and the schools try to be able to balance the budget. So thank you to the town.
Better, better.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're good.
It's better, yeah. Figure it out.
You know, you were just, you were just on the first page only.
Yeah, I think it was, I think when I presented, it went to a different screen.
Yeah.
Right, presented in PowerPoint. Sorry about that. So if you probably didn't see this, this slide either, but this is the slide I just went over that just they showed that the budget gap was down to $75,452. And this is, this is the presentation I was starting to kind of go over. So the need to add, to make some changes to the budget, to add the additional two buses, change the auto district placements. And then we also were able to reduce the transportation line because, line item, because we, we noticed that we received a lower contractual rate through the bid process and the award to one suburban transportation. So from our original 10 buses that were budgeted, you know, we can increase by $32,700. There was some one-time funding that was in, in the, in the budget. And certainly by working with the town and by being creative, we feel we can make this reduction to helping custodial PPE supplies, but still ensure that we have the supplies necessary for both the, the health services and the custodial services for sanitation and any PPE with masks and guns and gloves and so forth to get us through the year. So that was a very, you know, confident reduction that we felt we could make. This next addition, due to some low enrollment in, in the programs, we've always reduced a point five academic teacher. But we're very confident that that's not gonna have an impact on any individual. We think through, through attrition and so forth that it, that we would, it would be a reduction in place now, but we felt like we could make, make this change in the budget due to some, some low enrollment. We also felt like we created, this, this is, as you may recall, we added, the original budget included the addition of three new positions guided by a strategic plan, two of which were school adjustment counselors at the elementary, secondary level. So we felt those were the higher priority for mental and health, social, emotional needs of students. And this was the other position that we were attempting to sort of restore and kind of certainly change the, the position somewhat in terms of the duties and responsibilities. But we felt that we had to make a reduction. This is one position that we could sort of weigh on and look to, to add and certainly down the road. So that, that would be a reduction, but it's not a current position. And then we certainly talked about a number of times this use of SR money. Certainly elementary, secondary, school, emergency relief funding, which is part of certainly the COVID-19 pandemic and funds available for our schools. So we originally were planning on using about 50% of SR2. Now that we know we have an allotment that's going to be probably twice as much or more than the amount of SR2 coming for fiscal '23 and '24, we felt like we could use about 100% of SR2 in not create a situation where we're having a funding cliff situation scenario for fiscal '23 and '24. So this was by using 100% of SR2 funding in fiscal '22, you still have the ability to use SR3 in the two subsequent years and have a very even amount of about $220,000 to $225,000 of funding to help offset some of the, the new positions we've had to add into the budget because of COVID-19 and the school adjustment counselors and really be able to fund those positions at minimum for the next three years without having to avoid sort of a funding cliff and a big shift from offset subsidies, credit grants over to the general fund to create a hardship in any one year. So we felt that was a prudent fiscal decision to make. And that really allowed us to balance the budget. This right up here at the bottom speaks to the scenario I just talked about of our, our use of the SR2, SR3 funding allotment. And really, you know, we certainly put our, put our heads together to, to develop a list that would be reasonable in all, all areas that, as I said earlier, it could have been a lot difficult conversation this evening had we, had the town and the finance planning team not, not worked so hard over the last two weeks to, to be creative and develop the funding, find additional revenue through the funding, to finance, to the revenue plan of the town. Some budget conclusions, so what is, what does the FY fiscal '22 budget sort of certainly accomplish? We certainly meet our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. So that's kind of certainly a major objective that we need to do from the end of year. So we certainly would accomplish that. As we know, we have operational fixed costs from year to year with bussing increase, increases, other contractual services increases, utility costs. So it allows us to meet those needs, those fixed cost increases. And then also allows us to maintain and add staff to continue to have strong educational least hours student teacher ratios, especially at the elementary level. So all class items will certainly be in our recommended guidelines. It allows us to maintain the operational and instructional technology needs of the district. The technicians that we add in, the Florida custodians that we add in, we continue on into next year with this budget. It allows us to maintain health and safety services for all students, staff, and school community. For those, that really important PPE funding is, is going to be there. And the Florida school nurse, we continue to be funded, that was added this year. And then allows us to address the social, emotional, and mental health needs of all students. So certainly the, the addition of a school adjustment counselor at the elementary level as well as secondary level. Also part of this budget that is getting funded is the addition of an academic intervention two years at the elementary level at any school to help any learning loss or, you know, any learning gap that could be there, could be identified over the next several weeks as we work toward the end of the school year. And then the district's one-to-one program, which was certainly accelerated through the pandemic and now includes grades K through 12, will continue to be supported. And we have the funding there in this budget to support the one-to-one program. As I just mentioned, the expenses for PPE and sanitation and technology needs are there. And then the operational costs, which we've been focusing so much over the last, really, five or six years in the budget, to have the preventive maintenance and those contractual services, maintain all of our five school campuses from a building maintenance standpoint and a brown standpoint, would continue to be there. So we feel we're accomplishing a lot with, a lot with this budget in terms of moving the district forward, addressing the needs that may have been identified through this past challenging year with the pandemic. And then providing that student support need, which is gonna be so important for the social, emotional, and mental health needs of students. So we're, you know, certainly a lot is accomplished in, in the fiscal '22 budget. Every budget has sort of inherent risks involved with it. So there's always the potential for additional outside or change replacements, which may come with increased costs. So that's a line that we always have to watch. But I think we're in, in good standing to kind of address with any unforeseen costs. As we all know, we do, we do have a special education stabilization fund. It could be a town meeting article to increase funding there. So I think we're, certainly where we stand today is much better than where we were two or three years ago to deal with any unforeseen costs in that, in that area. We may have less reserves available in some special revenue accounts like athletics, kindergarten, preschool, bussing. Certainly facility rental, areas that took a little revenue hit this year. We'll, we'll try to address that as we look to close the fiscal year over the next two months, but it's certainly an area to, to watch. Certainly the possibilities every year to attrition savings that we predict may not be fully realized. And then, as we all know, the severity of all the winter hunts in us, no one ice cars, is often difficult to predict. And the food service programs performance, especially with the COVID-19 requirements and the, the change that's resulted there is often difficult to predict. But despite these five main risks, I really think we're, we're, we're in so good financial standing to kind of address any, any unforeseen as it arrives. So with that being said, that's really the high-level summary of the changes from where we got back and when the budget was presented at the beginning of March to where we stand now. And I think the, certainly the administration through Dr. Daley and the administrative team is very confident to recommend a balancing FY22 operating budget of $34,276,665, which again is a 5.2% increase over fiscal year '21. And, you know, again, I think as I said, mentioned in my opening comments, we couldn't have got to this, this place without a lot of hard work by a lot of folks out within the community. Certainly the school committee and members of the budget subcommittee, you know, met throughout the process and really creatively talked through some of the challenges in funding. Select Board, Finance Committee members, all part of that finance planning team, which, you know, really did an excellent job thinking creatively to get us to a much better place today and a much easier conversation this evening. And then members of the administrative council, school principals, directors, through our, our administrative team did an excellent job working hard throughout this process. So I certainly appreciate all their efforts. And then, of course, the students, the faculty, and staff, who've done just a superb job throughout, throughout this challenging year, making the best of the situation, moving the district forward. It's been really professional and certainly made everyone working in North Reading, public, very, very proud over the past year. And certainly the citizens of North Reading, I think, were very confident we could take this budget to the annual town meeting and be confident that it will have the full support. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, questions, Dr. Dianne.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. I'll open up to the school committee members first. If anybody in the public has questions, you can raise your hand or take your name and I'll call them deeper questions as well. But kind of go around, see if anybody has any comments or thoughts. And President, I keep forgetting about you because you're there. I will start with you and see if you have any comments or questions.
Thank you. But I'm sorry to disappoint. Mr. Connolly did such an excellent job of explaining it. I don't have any, any follow-up questions.
What? McGowan?
I don't have any questions. I, I just want to reiterate what you said, Scott, and like you said about how hard, how, it's my first year on the finance planning team, so it's been really interesting to watch how the town, the schools, the departments work together to, to work out these issues. And it's been certainly very gratifying to see that, that, that the town does that. It doesn't happen in every town and oftentimes municipal and school sides are at loggerheads. And, and that's not the case. That's not where we're at in North Reading right now. And I think it, I think it shows in where the budget ended up. I think it shows in how, really, if you consider the, some of the uncertainties out there, how quickly we're at the point where we're proving this budget on, on our usual schedule, but it could easily have been later based on how things went. So it's been a really good process and I think we ended up, I mean, it's pretty amazing to me that we have a 5.2% increase in our budget coming out of, out of this pandemic, hopefully coming out of this.
Viviana?
Thank you for working so hard to get it brought in. Is this like the largest increase? If I remember correctly, normally we, we go for about 5%, but we usually end up around like 2% or 3%.
Yeah. This is the largest increase really over the last 12, 12 years plus. So the 10, the 10-year average is about 3.4% the last couple of years. It was funded at about 3.8%. So this is, this is the largest increase over the last 12-plus years. I think the last one that was higher was 2008.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Aboutwell?
I'm just really grateful for all the hard work that went into this. And I know it's countless hours. And then, you know, I'm thankful for the support of the town and how the town supports schools and how we have the finance planning team and you guys on that, that board advocating. To see where we were down to where we are today is fantastic. So thank you, everyone.
And I'll just, I'll just add quickly and then go to the UDL and Scott again, Scott Buckley. I'll, I'll show the contrary side as well, where, you know, both the town and the school, we didn't aim for too much this year. We really just aimed to deal with where we're at right now with COVID. And so, I mean, on the town side and on the school side, we weren't asking for much. We were asking for, you know, the nurses and the, and the cleaning supplies and the people to do the cleaning and then some social, social, emotional learning. So my concern about all of this is there's, this is the new normal. And, you know, a lot of the way we're balancing is with one-time funding that's going to go away at some point in time. And that is a concern when, you know, expenses have been outpacing revenues already for the past few years. As Mrs. Ambriano pointed out, we're doing a higher increase, but a lot of that is with one-time funding, with, with one-time funding. And, you know, I think it's great for this year. I just worry more and more about the future, about where we're at when, you know, those funds run out. But I think we've taken as much of a conservative approach as we could to this budget. We've tried to just do what is absolutely necessary right now. I'm very grateful for everybody, you know, working together to get to this point. But, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand that, you know, even at 5.2% this year, a lot of that is just adjusting for the pandemic and what, you know, the needs that we have. And, you know, there are some tough years still to, still to come, so.
Yeah. If I, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. McGowan.
You're certainly correct. I, I think the great, the good thing about it is our, our approach gives us a, a three-year look ahead to sort of, sort of plan towards that, that time when those, those, yes, the DR funds begins to run out. So, but you're right. It's propped up for sure at five at one time.
Yeah. That's Daley?
Great, thank you so much. Just wanted to echo what everyone said about the great collaborative relationship with the town. I wanted to specifically thank Michael for his phenomenal work as always on this. He's so in tune to the needs of the district and is always willing to go back and sharpen pencils and make sure that we're able to balance our budget, but still continue to move forward. I agree with what you said, Mr. Buckley, about the one-time funds and the, the SR funds certainly went a long way here to help us out. But I, I'm very happy that we're not using all and we're able to preserve over time. Two pieces towards our NRPS 2025 goals that I just want to mention as well is with the kindergarten. We're continuously. We're, we're continuously working towards, you know, one of our goals to have, have free full-day kindergarten. We're going to chip away at that. You know, the president came out the other day, talked about free universal pre-K. Well, we still have a tuition-based kindergarten, so I think we have some work to do around that that we're going to continue to do, but this budget does include the continuation of the reductions that we already had this year and moving that forward. And something else that we were able to do that sort of, really, sort of that outside-the-box thinking that Michael and I and, and Mr. Clean, as part of our membership of the team collaborative, we talked about Emily Pat as the UDL coordinator. We would all love a UDL coordinator full-time in district, but we're able to share that position among many districts. Another position that many of us want to have is a, you know, a diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. And so that's a position that we're going to have for the fall, that's going to be shared among several districts. So just very quickly on that, this is sort of still in development, but it's going to be posted soon, but this includes Melrose, Linfield, North Reading, Stoneham, Wilmington, and Woburn. And this person will provide support and coaching for faculty and staff, including leadership of affinity groups, equity teams, committees, and staff retention, develop meaningful sustained professional development opportunities for students and staff, participate and advise in recruitment hiring efforts, both district-based and possibly regionally, provide instructional leadership and curriculum development through an equity lens, conduct equity audits and/or assist in the development of strategic planning, assist districts in data collection and analysis regarding equity inclusion, collaborate and support key stakeholders, including parent community groups, to perform other duties as assigned. So we have a, a, you know, a fractional share of that, but the, a lot of the benefits and everything are picked up by the collaborative. It's a terrific model, it's something that, you know, Michael and I worked on with, with Emily's position through a grant, but this group came together with superintendents and assistant superintendents to, to do it again. So I think it's just another example of finding creative ways to keep moving forward even in challenging budget years, so.
Great, great to hear. So, okay, any other comments or thoughts? So we can have a motion on the approved budget?
I will move that the school committee approves and hereby adopt the final fiscal year '22 school operating budget of $34,276,665. This represents an increase of 5.2% for $1,683,429 over fiscal year '21, and this is Rich. He made that motion.
Second, Diana.
Okay, any further discussion or thoughts or questions? Okay, we'll vote on that. Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass is 5-0. Thank you, everybody, for the hard work. Now, would you rather go to our superintendent for the return 10% learning, or do you want to continue on with the superintendent?
We could do the, just the update to continue business first.
Okay, we'll go back to continue business and we will do the return to in-person learning update by Dr. Daley.
Great, thank you so much. This is Dr. Daley. We have just a few updates that I want to share with you tonight about our return to in-person. As you know, our, all of our schools, all of our students are back in full in person, started right before the April vacation. We went through the challenges with travel and made sure that everyone still followed our order. We had very good response from our parents that did travel in, in terms of following the rules. We had the ability for those students to join remotely and really, I have to say, made it through last week with, with not a lot of challenges at all. It was really pretty successful, I think. I will note that there have been some positive cases, I think you've seen at the secondary level, especially at the high school. I will note that those are, you know, they continue to be individual positive cases. We're not, we're still not seeing the transmission in schools and we're seeing the, the transmission in schools still remaining the same, even though we've moved to the three-point. And so that is a, a big difference. Mr. Buckley?
Yes, this is Scott, just one, one quick question on that. Were, I saw right after the break, were all the students back in school or were some of those positive cases before they came back to school and they never came back to school, you know?
So out of those large number of positive cases, I believe two of those students have been in school in the last seven days. So very often what happens is students are quarantining already because of a sibling. So this is all the information that you can't really share in the, in the updates, but very often those students who were, were turning positive were already in a situation where they were a close contact from outside of school and they knew that they would be positive. So I believe there were only two out of that large number that I presented the last couple of weeks that were actually in school. There are some students that are, that are friends or active outside of the classroom and so we, we know that when those students get together without masks in a carpool, this is why we keep reiterating how important it is. It's really, like I've said so many times, it's always, everything's fine until it isn't, right? And you, and you're thinking, I'm just hanging out with my friends, I'm just hanging out with my cousin, I'm just saying. Always, you know, we still need to be vigilant, wearing our masks when we're, when we're together, especially when eating and drinking with, you know, going out with friends in a carpool, those kind of situations. That's really where, the only places where we're really seeing these, these positive transmissions at this time. So progressing, progressing well there, we have, the return to in-person is scheduled for May 10th, so it's coming up very soon. So we've sent out to those students who've selected to be in full remote, the opportunity to change and to come back sooner and so, I'm sorry, before the end of the year. And so that survey, Mr. Clean worked on that and I know that that went out last week and we are collecting all that information this week. Our goal, of course, is to continue to provide through the end of the school year the opportunity for students to work remotely, but I think to make sure that, that there's probably a good number of students who wanted to see how it went with the full return and they now want to transition back for the last six or seven weeks of school. And so that will be through the end of this week and then on May 10th, those students will fully return.
Do you have any idea of like what percentage of the students that are out right now will be coming back?
Of, of that, of that remainder?
Of, of the people that are out right now?
Yep.
How many of them?
It's still coming in. I don't know the latest figures or if it's.
Probably about, almost about 150 that are still remote. I'm going to say probably 30 to 40%, but we'll be doing some testing too, so I'll figure out the response.
So we've heard some, some parents reached out proactively and said, I'd really like the students to come back. And we had a, a larger time window to, to, you know, to, to figure out the logistics, but our principals have done such a great job of making this work that we were certainly able to accommodate those folks who want to come back on the 10th. And so my intention will be to tell the whole community that this has happened and then have them email me if, if, you know, I, I'm not looking to put out a survey for people to confirm that they're staying in person. We're going to assume they're in person and if they, if anyone wants to go the other way, they can let us know as well, you know, myself or the schools. But I, I imagine that everyone's goal now is to be back in person and it's, it's working well. There are certainly some students for different reasons that, that want to remain in remote and that will continue through the end of the year. Just want to be clear on that. I believe I've mentioned it before, but I just want to reiterate that pool testing will continue through the end of the year for those that are involved and it will be able to continue into our end-of-year, extended-year program. And so we do have some steps in place to continue with that work. We'll continue with Project Beacon, there'll really be no interruptions and we're able to add new folks as they, as they sign up. So that's been going very well and very helpful. Vaccinations have been very successful. I'm sorry, a question about pool testing?
I was just, yeah, this is Rich McGowan, just wondering, have you seen an increase of people being interested in participating?
There's, there's been a slight increase, but not a tremendous increase, yeah. I think, I think we've got a lot of the people that really were excited about it, that wanted to, to be involved, involved from the get-go. And it's been a, you know, our nurses have been terrific, as they have been all year, making this work, giving us a lot of great information. We've had a couple of instances that, where it's been very helpful, but for the most part, it's done its purpose, which is to provide that reassurance, certainly bridged the gap between having most of our staff vaccinated, which we are getting to the place now where, where almost all of our staff are fully vaccinated. There's a few that are now waiting for that 14-day window, but we're well up over 300 letters that we sent out to, to confirm that they are fully vaccinated. So that's, that's great news for our staff. So those are, those are really the, the major updates for, for the return to school. I think we have a, a good process in place. I just wanted to share also related, you know, differences this year, obviously, with all of our senior activities. And we've been meeting collaboratively with the town, the Board of Health Director, Mr. Bracy, Mr. Gilberto, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and the Public Health Nurse and Mr. LaPret, who've been working very closely with the students, just as we did last year, to come up with plans for graduation, plans for senior events, including, you know, discussions around the prom and some other pieces. And I, I don't want to completely steal Mr. LaPret's thunder and, but he's going to be announcing and sharing out all of those events very soon with, working with the students. So I think it's going to be, you know, something, again, it's going to look a little bit different, similar to last year, but I think some of those events are going to be back for students. And for these students who missed their junior prom as well, I think it's nice to know that some of these things are being discussed again for our kids. So I think you probably saw the signs on the fence as you came in, some of those nice traditions from the, from last year are back, but there's certainly opportunity for several events for seniors, so.
This is Diana. I just had a question for the kids going from fifth grade to sixth grade. I know last year they did kind of like a car parade and things like that. Do you know if anything is going to be planned for those kids as well?
There is, there's conversations, I know that the parent groups and, and the principals are working at all the, all the years, but especially the transition years, fifth grade, eighth grade, and, and senior year.
Yeah.
There are conversations. Again, how much of those things that take place and what they look like is still under discussion, but there are, you know, and some of the guidelines have opened up a little bit to allow for some more, some more events, outside events, different type of, of things to recognize our students. It's definitely different than it was last year in that, you know, most of the majority of students are back in school at this time and so not only the celebratory events, but we're also talking about what do the typical step up, step up from middle school, from elementary to middle, some of those events, what will they look like this year? We want to first and foremost be safe with those, but also try to provide some of those opportunities because they are very important transition opportunities. So I know that that's certainly something all of our principals are working on in each school.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Daley. Do you have any other questions? Okay, move on, Mr. Clean. We'll get updates from you on teaching and learning.
Before we get started, it's already close to 25%. I would just quickly move back to the survey and some double digits on the exact, but yeah, careful about that.
Thank you. Does she?
Yes, please. And I'm, you know, Patrick Chen from me. I want to congratulate you on the project, that's a big deal and it is, it is amazing. One thing not to have to worry about right now is the climate of work that's gone into this school year, starting in the next year, going on with the budget, so congratulations on that. It's been a, it's been a interesting transition, starting a new position on December 1st of 2020, in the middle of hybrid learning. You don't expect, you're trying something new, to do something that, to kind of get caught up to speed when you've been doing one thing for a long time. And this is probably the first time that I've been able to sit in front of you and in front of the community, so I want to take a second and just thank some people and, and acknowledge and appreciate the work that has been invested to get here and to help my transition. I want to thank the school committee, the parent community and students. I want to thank Dr. Daley especially, having the wealth of knowledge of this position that's been invested in this district over the past decade and some change. It's just really nice to be able to ask those quick questions, the ones that could take you an hour to get the answer that you can get in five minutes, so it's made my life so much easier. My administrative assistant, Nicole Orlando, for her daily support and reminders. The administrative council of strong relationships with the leadership and the building principals and their help in, in allowing us to move forward. The curriculum teacher, the curriculum and teacher leaders have been nothing but welcoming and supportive during this transition and have brought a, a lot of knowledge and experience to help us during this, this time, especially with the change in models. The central office staff training me in some of the new protocols and things that I need to experience. And then finally, the, the bachelor of school community for the experience that I had there, helped me prepare myself as a leader, helped keep my vision bigger than just K to five and helped me get to where I am right now. And the community of North Reading, I am one of those fortunate people when you, when you think of longevity, that I have been in the community of North Reading since 1996. So you don't want to do math on that quickly. But it, it is a town that I started as a teacher. I've always been enamored by the community, the support from the parents, the support from the school committee, the administration, the budget process is always tedious, but I always feel like we're able to get what we need for our students. And the parents are, want the best for their kids. And when we work together, we can do amazing things. So I've been very fortunate in my experience and I hope to continue that in this role. And looking back at our teachers in, in this past year, just the, the amount of commitment, the investment that they are in their profession, the way that we use data to drive our decisions and our goals, the collaboration that has been in, taking place this year at all levels has been remarkable. Some of the healthiest collaboration I've seen in the district in a really long time. And, and yes, is some of that a response to the school closure and coming back in the fall? I believe it is, but then the value that you find from working with others and how to share the responsibility has been absolutely remarkable to, to observe. The ability to reflect upon what we're doing and to always want to do a little bit better. You know, we are, Dr. Daley starts at the top with the school committee and the work that you, you come up with a plan, you check to see how the plan's going, you tweak that plan. There, there is no one way to do anything. So it's been, it's been my honor to date to serve in this position. Before I go any further, I just wanted, I did want to recognize that it is Teacher Appreciation Week and thank you to all the educators in the district for the work that they do. And before, you know, so I don't have to send a, call Colleen Reska Nurse Appreciation Day on, on May 6th as well. And the nurses have been absolutely remarkable this year with the work and the support that they've taken on to help our students and our families through this time. We're good. Move to the next one. Oh, you did, sorry. I can't see what you're doing, that's the problem. And in a, in a year like no other, you know, it's, I'm proud of the work that we've achieved. The, the planning that's gone into the hybrid learning model, all the digital technology that's, that's come in to support the student learning has been, has been remarkable. It's been a great opportunity for me that I'm fully committed to. Over the past five months, I've worked hard to support district initiatives and help lead our schools back to their full in-person learning. It's been a challenging year, but I look forward, forward to working with all invested stakeholders to develop a more comprehensive plan to support our administration, teachers and staff and students to drive our continued success. And I've been doing that by taking time and meeting with people to understand the current state and vision of teaching and learning in the district, which I had a, a very good handle in as a K to five educator. IRC works very closely together, so my understanding of the K to 12 vision and the work of the administration has been, I feel like, pretty solid. But the time I've had to be able to talk to teacher leaders, teachers in other buildings, students, parents in the community have been really helpful as I, as I start to think about what that plan might look like. Continue to build strong relationships with stakeholders to improve our professional practice, to impact student learning, student learning and the experience in our schools. And take the time to celebrate the, the strengths and areas of success that we do very, very well in North Reading and continue to identify areas of growth because we can always do better. Go to the next slide. And the curriculum focus for 2020, it's really started, you know, the, I, I've been fortunate to be doing some of this work back when the schools closed in COVID in March, I was helping out and then going through, so I've had some traction there of trying to understand what the power standards and the work that we did with the state with the, the school closure and the remainder of the 2019, 2020 school year. And then really focusing on the, the beginning of the school year on working with teachers and the scope and sequence and what that might look like in hybrid and remote learning as far as pacing, student engagement, and student learning outcomes. And unfortunately, with, with the trends and where we are, to be able to return to, to in-person learning has been, has been super helpful for our teachers and our students. The energy in the building is, is back. You're, you're seeing more consistent teacher and student interactions, you're, you're, the teachers are able to observe the learning and growth more consistently. You're, you're, the teachers are able to observe the learning and growth more consistently, provide more opportunities for guided practice and give immediate feedback. The technology they were using to do that in remote was, was good and better than nothing, but there is nothing quite better than seeing, working with students directly when they're in front of you. With assessment and data, we have, we didn't have MCAS in 2020, so we, one of our big data objectives wasn't available to us. So we've been spending a lot of time, one of our common assessments is, is I Ready that we use in grades three to eight for reading and K to eight in math. And we, we figured that'd be a good place to start when we were looking at some of our student learning goals and preparation. It's only one data point, but it's, it's a good one to be able to look at. So if you look at the reading diagnostic, so you have a comparison on the left-hand side is the mid-year diagnostic from 2019, 2020, and then the mid-year diagnostic from this school year. And the good news is we have multiple years of, of this data and the trends are pretty consistent. So you can notice that the, there aren't a lot of differences, there's a few ticks here and there, but it is a different set of students that are in the band. Mr. Rupp?
I have one question, Colleen. The diagnostic, it looks like there's about 25 to 30% of the students that don't take the test, like up 450 kids or so. Why is it that, you know, about a quarter to 30% are not at that, deteriorating?
This is the only place that that was a large number. We did talk about that quickly. And I'm not sure if it was the timing of where COVID came in, if, if a few grade levels did not finish their testing, if their window was extended or something like that. I did not drill down to, to find out which students and where the participation didn't occur. I can definitely do that and get that back to you to, to give you that because you'll notice even in, I think in 2020, that, my screen's a little bit smaller, it might be more students than we had enrolled because some students sometimes will take a diagnostic twice if they get signals that they've taken the test too fast or too quickly. So there'll be go through there, but that's a fair question.
Thank you.
With the reading, I think the biggest thing that we were going to look to focus on coming out especially, this is grades three to eight, is in the grades one and two. Fortunately, this year we were able to bring our kindergarten back to full in-person. So they've gotten a, a full 100, well, they will have a full 170 days, still 10 days shorter of what they usually would have in an instructional year. But in the early literacy, the work of last year's kindergarten and first grade students of being taught how to actually read, the science of reading is something that we're paying attention to with DIBL data and other information that we have available to monitor that as they start to get into their older grades. The upper grades, it really continues to be a focus on vocabulary comprehension in literature and informational text. So when we go to the math on the other side, the data's a little bit different, not, not too concerning, but it makes a little bit more sense with the missed days of instruction, the pacing that occurred that we, we had a little bit of a dip. If you notice the data between 2019 and 2020, we're seeing more students in that tier two this school year. But the good, the good news with this data is it's on grade level standards. So at the beginning of the year, I didn't, I didn't pull the beginning of the year data. The majority of the triangle would be yellow, right? Because it's on the grade level standard that you're taking the assessment. So your mid-year is, has made some marked improvement and be, I didn't want to go through the whole step because that's so much about the school improvement plan goals for some of the districts, but to be able to celebrate the success where they're going. But math has been an area that we've been, we've been focusing on to give a little bit more support to our students, address any of the holes that may exist and provide a little bit more remediation. Earlier in the school year, we, we allocated some additional math support through Title One to meet the needs of students. And then we're also hoping to pilot a summer academy this summer through Title One for math, just to try to, we're, we're looking right at the mid-August instead of the traditional middle of the summer, we're looking to do something a little bit closer to the start of the school year to focus on remediation and then to move a little bit of preparation into that next grade level transition, look at that standard and try to do a little bit of pre-teach as well.
Would that, would that be in person or online?
That will be in person because it's not part of the extended school year. So that's the data that we're using and, and hopefully next year we'll, we'll have more. We have plenty of common assessments to be able to use. We go to that next slide, we'll start talking about MCAS. We have the, MCAS has started with administration. You know, we, the, we were waiting for the state timelines kept getting moving, there were still thoughts that they might go away, but, but they did not. And it's, it's, I think that most people would have preferred to have a year, another year off from state testing. I think the data might be helpful for us. I think the state has advocated and, and reduced the testing sessions to make it a little bit more manageable to be able to provide us some information from our students. The biggest difference is the class of 21 and 22, where they still have the option to take the MCAS, but they did not need to, they just need to have a successful completion of a relevant high school course. And then the state provides us all the relevant courses through that for this year and for next. It is important to, to recognize that we'll be, we're offering that test and, and we'll be doing it again in the fall for students who are interested. There's different scholarships that are available and/or the field of bi-literacy both require a threshold on the MCAS test to achieve those. So as those opportunities are scheduled, we'll be sure to communicate that to students and families alike. So there's no surprises with that. We don't want think, people think that they just don't have to take MCAS, it's still a tool that will be available for them to help them. The biggest thing with grade three to eight is it's all going to be in-person. Obviously, we have students in remote, so some students that are home and remote learning have been invited to come in. If the parents felt comfortable bringing them, we said, I want to thank the principals and the teachers for the work that they have done to create testing stations, testing sessions that are, embrace our guidelines and families to feel that their students could be safe in the school during that, but they're also doing a remote learning. And I think that's why they're using grades three to eight to, to test this, this means of assessment out. It will be just like you are there, if you're sitting at your student desk, you'll have your Google Meet on, they'll be watched and there'll be the protocol for security. MCAS is pretty tight with what the expectations are, but that's something that our, our students will be experiencing this year and will be able to report more about that after the completion of the assessment. Through educator evaluation is the next big update. We, working on those, we have the new teachers, developing educators in years one through three. We have our professional status educators, that's teachers with anybody more than three years of experience, and they've all been responsible to create student learning goals and professional practice goals. You can go to the next slide. It's just a, what a, what a year to be a first teach, a first-year teacher, you know, the, like I said, as a new assistant superintendent, if I'm coming right out of school, nobody has prepared you for this. If I worked in another district before this, nobody's prepared you for this. I am prepared for that because that happened the last time we were here and I know Dr. Daly will shut that off for me. I want to thank the, the mentor coordinators of the district, Jesse O'Brien, Catherine Jones and Des McCurth, who have worked really hard with the district-trained and assigned mentors. I think you went to the power button on the top last time, Patrick.
Yep.
And most importantly, I want to thank the commitment of our first-year educators. It's, it's a lot of work to be a first-year teacher. I can't, I can't imagine what it's like to be a first-year teacher in this, in these conditions. So they have, they have stepped up and, and tried to meet the occasion as best they can. With, for the years, for the teachers who, oh, our final meeting will probably be June 3rd, I'm just trying to confirm that. That's the best news of the night. We're hoping to do our, an in-person meeting instead of virtual for our traditional ice cream celebration of some sort. So that will, that's something that we hope can, can come together because that was a nice tradition that we definitely missed at the end of the year last year. For our developing educators in years two and three, they've been participating with the mentor coordinators and the SEL mentors, working on a SEL modules in five sessions. That's mostly been led by Lori Blake, Nicole DiDonato and Andrea Gagnon, where they've attended, I think that three, two and a half, three-hour sessions on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making as part of the district's work to continue through there. For the student learning goals, absent of the, not having the traditional data available to us until really when the, the diagnostic was completed in September, so at the same time we're in, but we didn't have a ton of student learning data to work with. So we, we allowed teachers this year to have either a student learning goal or two professional practice goals. So they all worked collaboratively to create a student learning goal based on, on learning objectives and achievement in the hybrid and remote learning model. So you saw really a focus on engagement, participation and success, along with the best practices of hybrid and remote learning, meaning through all the digital learning training that they had this summer and the continued work from when the students came into school to where we are, this is where teachers continue to share and keep working hard for where they are. The professional practice goal, as, as Chris Lindsay mentioned at the beginning of her UDL session, the district decided that it would be a, a good time for professional practice goal to, to look at social justice. And when we started to build out our social justice goals, you know, you, you quickly started getting into language of cultural proficiency, as Dr. Daly mentioned a little, a few moments ago, diversity, equity, inclusion and what that can look like in our schools and our classrooms. It's actually a perfect example of when we talk about goal setting, of what we want for a district as far as having school committee goals, administrative goals and teacher goals all support and address one area of improvement. So if I'm correct, I believe the, the school committee, one of your actionable items for a goal was to support a review of the curriculum to ensure diversity, equity and inclusion, and then also participate in and support ongoing working groups for social justice and reopening. And then if we, the administrators were able to work under that umbrella to kind of start to look at our ability to model for faculty and staff, the mindset of social justice and equity, work together to reflect, assess and in response, expand knowledge of what it means to be an agent of change as it relates to social justice and equity. As an administrative council, we've worked together, we've digested numerous articles, had multiple conversations and are really looking forward to our summer work for NRPS 2025, to be able to divine, define a little bit more detail in what that strategic plan would be. For the teacher goals, this is a kind of a template that we, we shared with them as an idea that would come through throughout the 2021 school year collaboratively, work collaboratively to identify the concepts of social justice as appropriate for my grade level. In addition to background reading and developing a common language, this goal will also be measured by actionable items, including a process to review curriculum, materials and lessons to ensure equity for all students. So teachers that set goals like this, that's close to 300 professionals, have all worked right under what that school committee directive was, from that work of what we need to do and to try to provide that as we move forward. They all, they all involve self-assessment. All of this work begins with understanding where you are, who you are, what your cultural beliefs are and how, what power you have as a classroom teacher in choosing what materials you use and how they're presented. They all included some level of PD and collaboration and the teachers were, in a, in a survey provided so much positive feedback to the work about what they felt like it's brought to their classroom community, just the time to be able to invest and share with colleagues. So we need to value diversity, manage the dynamics of difference, and then we're going to continue to work on institutionalizing our cultural knowledge and proficiency. The state provides us very clear direction on what the expectations are as, as leaders and teachers, and I included both in the link at the beginning of that where it's an educator evaluation as the teacher's standard two, indicator D, cultural proficiency, on what that language is to help them drive those goals. And then I've included on this slide too, what it will look like for administrators. The state used this as a direct, to help us, help our teachers really focus for the 2020, for this current school year. And most of the meetings we're in right now, it appears that this work will be consistent for next year as well. From the work that we've done, we've been able to talk about professional development and planning. This year was definitely a different year where we invested 10 days at the beginning of the year for professional development that was really about preparation for school opening. It was so important to be able to spend that time to talk about all the safety protocols, to review all the tools that we had, to figure out how we were going to take attendance, all that work that went into it. We even adjusted the calendar to move a, a professional development day, not to lose another in-person student day for hybrid learning, right? So we had that regular rotation. So instead of having a day off, we, we pulled back a PD day off the table that we're going to put onto the end of the school year. So the students will end on June 16th and then we'll have professional development days on June 17th and 18th, which is going to give us a, some powerful time to bring in some really, it's really good PD to, to recognize the work that we've done, to frame what the work that we have to do as we plan for the summer. Over the course of the year, the amount of work that went into self-care, it felt like the district, Cynthia Conan, Director of Student Services, did a fantastic job working with the SEL mentors and other service providers to make sure that our teachers and staff were able to take care of themselves and focus on self-care to make sure that they were best prepared to take care of our students. And my favorite analogy is the one where you're on the airplane, right? You need, when those oxygen masks drop down, you got to be able to put it on yourself before you can help somebody else. And we, that's something that we've really stayed consistent with all year and tried to keep a pulse on where our educators are, so they're in the best place to be able to help our students. In working with the teachers this year and, and social justice and the work, trying to get feedback on where they want to go for professional development next year, this was just a quick survey question, they could have put in anything else, this was specifically on social justice and cultural proficiency. But 90% of the participants of the survey wanted additional professional development to support cultural proficiency in our schools. And then followed by, which I thought was interesting, teaching adults and students to speak up against bias and injustice, which I thought was a, a pretty powerful PD option to consider. One thing that, through the pause group and working with PD at the beginning of the year to support the professional development of educators, was one course that we offered for all teachers, well, we offered four teachers, I shouldn't say all teachers. It did fill, there was 20 seats, it filled in the first 36 hours. It was a 15-hour professional development course that really broke into three modules. The way it was broken down was culturally competent teaching and learning, breaking down racial inequities and striving for an equitable curriculum. Karen Hall is a, is a English second language teacher from Reading, Massachusetts. She was the presenter and she has put this course together. It was filled with teachers and administrators for five, at least five administrators attended to work with teachers and it included breakout sessions and being able to talk about specific articles and focus through there. And their survey back over 100% would recommend this, this course to a colleague. So it is, as, like we said, something that's probably going to be a big rock for us in the future, that it's something that we're looking to, to make sure that new teachers to the district have the opportunity to understand how important cultural, culturally proficient... cultural, culturally proficient teaching and learning is to this district, that we can also offer to new teachers and hopefully some other teachers will look to participate in the future. And then now, we, we take everything that we've learned from the year, as we start to, before we wrap up, we really got to start thinking about what next year starts to look like and come up with that plan. So I know that we've had lots of conversations about the, the build-out of NRPS 2025. We have curriculum development projects that we'll need to spend more time with, that probably weren't as intense this year. Just due to where we were in our, and what we were asking our educators, but recently our world language standards were just revised in April. So we had to, to break those down and start to write our, rewrite our curriculum. We have an art standards that were approved in 2019 that we need to provide our teachers more time and opportunity to get into a little bit further. And then we're also working on some English language learning as we curriculum from, as a result of our, our Office of Language Acquisition Self-Assessment. At the end of the year, we'll, as always, we'll take a, a better look at the data and hopefully be able to look at some of that MCAS to see what the, the state is telling us. Really focus on the social emotional learning and the continued impact on our students. Cynthia Conan does say that the best, it's, we're, we have gotten through this part of where we are very well. And those additional school adjustment counselors that we're talking about, and the time that we're putting in to put support for learning loss and things like this. This is, this isn't just going to be back to normal in September. This is going to be a multi-year project to make sure that, that we're in a place where our students continue to perform at the highest level, in an environment where they're, they're challenged, they feel successful and comfortable. So that is a pretty lengthy, verbose update of where we are with teaching and learning. I could talk to you about, probably about a dozen other things, but we can do that after.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colleen. Laura, we're going again. Any comments, questions?
At the beginning, you were talking about, you were doing a comparison of a couple of different assessments from last year and this year, and I think, you know, there's a, certainly a general concern in society and that students have missed so much or are going to be quote-unquote way behind. And so I wonder if you can speak a little bit to how those assessments at schools play out as we get into the new year, and also what steps are taken in the new year to, to sort of see where students are at compared to where they might, you know, normally be coming into those situations.
It's, I really use one set of data like everything else. So what we're going through, I'm really depending on, we're, we're hopefully going to be investing time on that June 17th day. Really focusing on department and content to go over scope and sequence, performance uncommon assessment. What did they, because one of the things, one of the hardest things, I think, for our teachers is when they come back in September, they think September, well, they already started 10 days late. Now they got students in person for two days, you had, you had hybrid, like, I, we need to be careful of, how much did we cover well, right? Because I'd rather slow down, teach, make sure our students are learning, be able to identify what items that we might need to revisit and push to the next year. That's where, that planning is going to be so important as we get ready for next year. Because if we don't recognize that, and we just keep going, gaps are going to be there, and they, they run the risk of expanding wider. So I think that the MCAS data will be another source to be able to look at, and then we have so many other different assessments that we use as common assessments to review, and then also teacher feedback on that.
And in general, it's not uncommon for, at the beginning of a year, to do assessments, to sort of, as a check-in anyway, to see where, see where kids are, and then you can kind of go from there, and it's kind of standard.
Just about everywhere we have that, some level of a diagnostic, whether it be the I-ready, or find out where students are, to know where they are, and to plan accordingly.
And then on the educator eval process, I know in the past we've talked about the, you know, managing the volume of evaluations is something, Dr. Daly, you talked about when you were in this role a year or two ago. In general, has, how have you, how have we addressed that? To sort of share, to even out that burden and, and, you know, are you doing, is this, is what is, are, are individuals doing, are still doing too many quote-unquote evaluations?
I think we're always looking at how many, and what is that helping them out? I think that it's kind of like class size, like some years you have 25 kids in your class, and some years you might have 19. But the, I, I do think we were truly sensitive this year to mainstream the process to make it as functional for educators and administrators. I think that at the end of the year, we'll probably look to recalibrate, this was wonky. Dr. Daly did keep most of the people that he was working with. I was working with a lot through the first couple of months, but now Mr. Maloney was ready to be taking on more and wanted to and should be, doing more of what that practice is about to the school. Some of the, the secondary coordinator position in the district that will come on will be able to take on some more and pull off, so it's just a reorganization. It is an annual exercise that we try to do, and, and people are worried about, trying about.
So one thing we've done as well is we streamlined the process to really focus on the goals, and we were able to do that this year for everyone. But moving forward, that should help as well. We've streamlined the amount of paperwork that's done, and that's been through the negotiations with the NREA too. We still want to give them valuable feedback, but we want to keep it focused, and we seem to have a mutual agreement there. And then really it's through the addition of some of the positions that are in NRPS 2025 that are not yet a part of our budget, that we're in those second and third tiers that we continue to be there, before we can fully realize that those ratios that we need for evaluation.
Other comments, questions? I'm going to move where I can get them. Power here. Janine?
Diana. I just, Diana, I just, I have a general question just from my own personal experience, but, you know, with the, you think about kids and possibly, you know, being behind and having to catch them up and that sort of thing. But I, and even with parents that I'm friends with too, there's been some children that have done so well in the remote environment where they've kind of kept up, and they, it didn't impact them as much, and then others where they are falling behind because they don't, again, individualized learning, it's just not what works for them. And what is your thought on, how do you keep the kids that were advanced engaged? Because I know there's going to be a lot of focus on those that fell behind, and I think that's where it should be. But do you feel like those, those children that are yearning for, for more when you move into the, the next grade? And if you're taking a step back, if that's the strategy, if that will impact them at all?
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily say the strategy was to take a step back per se, more so understanding where the students are. I think that by nature, our best practices include how to appropriately challenge all students in the classroom without alienating students that are, are still working to get to the grade level standards. So it, it takes a little bit of creativity on how you deliver your, your instruction and how you support. And I also think, you know, so the budget supported some academic intervention tutors at the elementary level. And I think we'll need more data to see if this is a bigger problem. As Mr. McGowan said, the data is enough to pay attention to, like, the reading is really not a significant concern. Of ours right now, where students were reading every day, you have to read to know how to get to the next level on your video. You know, you're contextually reading all the time. So that's the math and the, the direct practice. Same thing like when we look at, why do we struggle with geometry as a, on MCAS or math? Because we usually see it for one unit every single year. If you don't practice that skill all that time, hopefully with the operations, a number percent will get that back, which will help them be more successful. And if there are areas of need, we'll be creative on how to support them.
Yeah, I just figured maybe those gaps that are always there might be able to figure, right?
No, it's a risk, because, and I think when you look at that, where we're paying attention to that increased number of kids in that, that tier two, that yellow group, is to see where they are at the end of the year to that grade level standard. We're still using that data to drive the support that we're giving right now, to see if we can make a difference for those two by the time the end of the year's diagnostic comes up.
Thank you.
Chris, any thoughts?
Lots of thoughts, but no, no questions. I think this is a great presentation, and thank you.
I guess I'll just say, actual presentation, it's nice to see what's happening. And I know we set our goals, and it's nice to see how, how they kind of go throughout the whole district. My question's actually a little bit unrelated, but just as your job, as you've transitioned into a new role. I don't know everything that you guys do, but I know that when Dr. Daly was in that position, a lot of time he wasn't in the district. He had to go to different meetings, out of town and everything. So I would imagine that it's nice in some ways that you're here more right now, but how do you think that will change in the future? I mean, maybe, maybe some of those things won't come back, but like, how will that all change in the future? Because, you know, your first year, you've been able to be in district a lot, and I know that when Dr. Daly did that position, he wasn't.
I personally, I think that you're, I think you'll see more of a hybrid model coming out of a lot of the, the larger interest groups. I think the department vet will realize how easy it is for them to schedule synchronous live meetings, but then they're also recording them, and then they can make them available to people, that's super helpful. If I've had a conflict, to be able to miss something and know I can get a recording later. The job-alike stuff for me is something that I'd be more interested in doing some in-person stuff and building relationships with people who are in this role in other districts to, to be able to rely on and, and cultivate my growth as the assistant superintendent. But I do see, and I hope, you know, that the majority of the time is here, there's going to be different things you have to do. And however it is, we'll take full management.
I'll adjust that too, and I, I think the hybrid model is what's going to come out of this, because for years we tried to do more of this, and just people didn't have the technology, didn't have it, you know, so we've talked about with the large job-alike group in the North Shore, CSDN that we kind of lead, talking about alternating every other, you know, having the in-person meeting for some topics, and then having like the distant groups come in for the larger remote meetings. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, because it is something that I think it's great for Sean in his first few months in the role, to be here as much as he's been, to form some of those relationships with the secondary level teachers that he knew, but now he's really getting to know them in a different way. I just want to say thank you to you for a great presentation and for all these pieces that you covered. But in addition to all those bullets of your job description, Sean's also the assistant superintendent, and he's been there with me as a right-hand, you know, second right-hand, like Michael, just to do everything from, you know, the return to in-person learning, the start times, the, you know, he really, when I needed someone to really help me through the pool testing and COVID and all those things, and he's great just walking around the building, looking at traffic with me. And he's sort of like the mayor, you know, he knows all the kids, Michael and I will say, he's got all the batch of other kids that, that remember him and look at him. He's got the high school soccer players, so he's really just been a great addition to our, to our district team. And as you said earlier, I think, you know, to take those skills and talents to that full district level, I really, it's such a difference having him here since December, and has really made us able to do, and allowed me to do more of my job. And it's been hard to delegate, but it's been easy to delegate for Sean, so it's been, it's been great. And I, and I do appreciate how much we spend just working together, he, Michael and I, and Cynthia and Dr. Downs working together closely. So it's been really great, so thank you for the presentation.
McGowan?
I, I thank you as well, and I'd just say that, you know, this is a great presentation to have, and would love to hear from you a couple of times, you know.
Oh, I, as I was doing this, and trying, like, just organizing and try to keep it as little time as possible, because I know how busy your expenses are. I, I would really appreciate that opportunity of, whether it's quarterly, or whatever we decide as part of what that is. I think that way we can maybe get a little deeper on one thing and then get the next one after and stuff like that. So I think that's a great idea.
No, we, we always budget lots of time for these assistant superintendents, so you're, you're, we, we have the time in there.
Yeah, great.
Okay, any other comments, questions, thoughts? Okay, moving on. So the next thing on the agenda is school choice vote, but I'll be honest with you, this is something about next year's, next year's school year, and since we don't have to vote till the end of June, and since we do have an election tomorrow, I think it makes more sense for the elected committee to actually call on that, I'm going to pass over this at this point in time. We can address it at the next meeting.
And it's always done before June 1st, so we should be fine with May 17th.
Yeah, we have one more meeting, and so, I just, we, we usually, I think that, I, I think it makes the most sense for the committee that will be here to be taking the vote. And then we go to North Shore Education Consortium Budget and Tuition Rates. I assume that Mr. Connolly is going to be leading us through this, right?
Yes, I can, I can address it. So as typical, the two member collaboratives that we are part of, the collaborative in North Shore, we share with you our annual budget. There's, you know, I think the highlights here, which are reflected in the packet, is, I think they certainly had some, some challenges, but I think it's mainly due to the COVID pandemic, they are looking at. The rate increases is a little bit higher than what it's been previously. I think for member communities, the rate increases of, you know, you know, 5%, which is a little bit, little bit higher than, than we've seen and that we would hope. And they are increasing their membership rates as well, and their membership fee by $5,000, which they have not done for a number of years, so. I think some of this is probably pandemic-related, I would think as I, as I read through their highlights. I think that, that was reflected. But I think overall, I think we have, we have two students in a North Shore placement currently, and there's a chance that we could have more next year as well, so if you look at the tuition rates for member and non-member communities, it certainly makes a lot of sense for us to continue to, to be a member of North Shore Consortium. Along with a, you know, discounted tuition placement for students that may attend, if they make sense to do so. There are other collaborative and professional development benefits and opportunities to, to work with within this consortium, as Dr. Daly can speak to, and similar to how that relationship with them seems collaborative as well. So we certainly would support their, their budget and continue to definitely advocate.
Dylan?
Yep, Dr. Daly, I'll just say that I believe there's also, they, they don't receive ESSR funds, I believe, in the state. So they have a, yeah, they have a one-time request for member districts to provide $5,000, which would give them about $100,000, which would allow them to be, you know, put in the positive for the year. So I, you know, again, as, as Mr. Connolly said, it's a wonderful collaborative relationship. You know, Fran Rosenberg does a great job leading this group, and there's all the great programs they provide, which are very, very special, specialized programs, but it's also all those other pieces as well. And the collaborative is great for different job-alikes, different possibilities. The job-alike program I spoke about earlier, they, they house our financial assets for that group, for all of our member districts and, and beyond. So certainly give our support for them, and they did a great job with the budget this year to, to stay where they needed to stay, so.
So just to be clear, the vote tonight, it says we need to vote, is it to vote to renew our membership in, in there? I mean, we, we don't have to approve their rate, do we, or the member district?
To, to accept the, the budget as a part of it, yeah. So I'm on the board, I voted to approve the budget, but then I'll just have to bring it to the school committee.
I'd be like to make a motion to accept the North Shore Education Consortium budget for this school year 2022. By Janine, and seconded by Diana, so we'll take the vote on this. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, that's a five zero. Very much. That concludes most of this. Now we have a routine matter. First, start with the minutes. To Zimbriano, please, in our minutes.
Certainly, I move to approve the open session minutes of April, sorry, um, the eight, uh, open session budget workshop minutes of April 12th as written. Second?
Issues, any comments?
Nothing I saw.
Okay. Vote, Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, past the five zero.
I make a motion to accept the open session minutes of April 15th as written. Second?
Comments, prayers here? Okay, vote, Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye, sorry.
And then I as well, five zero. That's all we have. Budget update, Mr. Connolly?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Buckley. So the April budget report is reflecting the packet this evening. It's essentially summarized the financial activity just about through the end of April. Again, I, there's not a lot of new information from previous reports. So I somewhat, sometimes I feel like I've got a sort of a broken record speaking to the, the highlights of the budget update. But, you know, there was, as we all know, there was certainly some unanticipated expenses this year related to COVID-19 with various equipment and upgrades. Certainly, you know, technology items that had to be addressed and it's done so relatively quickly. I'm happy to report that we worked really well leveraging any available funding through available federal funding sources through the Municipal Carers Act, working with both Town Administrator and Town Finance Director. All of those funds, which was essentially agreed up to for the school department, $550,000, over a little bit more than a $1.3 million allotment, have been generalized or expended and transferred over to that fund. This report's reflecting, you know, accurate information. We have really good established relationships now with some PPE vendors that offer state contract competitive pricing that we can get now very, very quickly. So there was a time when these lead times were very, very long and you had to be so on top of it. But now we can, we can turn around and get PPE when needed very, very quickly at a nice competitive price. So really what we're focusing on now in the month of May and June would be closing the fiscal year, looking at opening conferences, open purchase orders, and, and trying to have a nice, successful, strong closeout. I think in terms of the utility expenses, we're still certainly encumbering the majority of our sort of heating and electricity costs. But I do anticipate there's going to be savings from both heating and electricity line items that we could reapportion elsewhere as we typically done. I've, I've spoken about the revolving balances and the need to kind of monitor this. And I, again, it's all media concern, but there's certainly need to, to look at these as we approach the, the last couple of months of the year and really make sure we have some, some healthy balances that we look into next year, given there's still a level of uncertainty involved here. On the payroll side, you know, certainly some, some projected surpluses given some changes that occurred after, after the budget was adopted. But we certainly did, I think, a really good job adding the necessary staff and using the federal S R and reopening and technology essentials grant that we did have to, to bring in the, not only the, the equipment and the supplies, but there's the staffing that we needed. There's some balance reflected in some line items that I've spoken to in terms of special education, the administration and substitute lines just from kind of attrition and so forth. We do experience some level of savings. But overall, I think the, the majority of our payroll lines continue to be within our, our, you know, budgeted line items. And I think we are, there's a lot of work that has to happen over the next seven to eight weeks. So it's now that the budget's adopted for fiscal 22, the, the focus is really going to be fiscal 21 and closeout. We have a later process, so that, that wouldn't have time to stretch, but I'm confident we'll have, have a solid, solid end of the fiscal year. And I, I really believe we are well positioned to put ourselves in good financial standing at the start of fiscal 22. Certainly special education prepayment, which I mentioned, I know, I believe I mentioned in the, the write-up, we've already started to encumber and receive those ends of the report, is already reflects a, a, a good portion of that. And we're going to continue to, to try to do some of the things that we've talked about during the FY22 development, budget development process. So I think, yeah, I think we're in good financial standing, there's some work to do to, to, to closeout. We're prepared to do that. I also added a, a page, additional page to kind of show you the summary of the S R money and, and everything that we've expended to date. But it certainly was a lot happening in fiscal 21 and there'll be more happening in fiscal 22 with the S R two funding. But you can certainly see that we have expended all of the reopening grant funding. We're on pace to expand all of the S R one through, on, by June 30th. We've expended all the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant, which essentially was hotspots and Chromebook student devices. We did receive a prevention fund state program this year. We're on pace to have all those funds expended on June 30th that we need, need to, to, to do. And that mainly was a lot of PPE and, and supplies, some of the, the costs for pool testing and those types of things, the cost for, for nursing to contract trace that was some part of that grant. And the S R two, the amount is really planned for fiscal 22. We're still waiting patiently for the release of S R three, which we think will happen by the middle of this month. It should be coming up really soon. And then I just spoke about the Municipal Carers Act. And then the School of Efficient Equipment Grant, we've already done the POs for this two equipment. I know Ms. McGovern is very excited to see, to receive these two pieces of equipment, which will be very beneficial to her program. And I also included the, the timeline so we can kind of see what, what we're basing on. So you always want to spend first in, you, you want to spend first. So certainly the prevention fund, which expired on June 30th, needs to be spent first. And this is potentially the, the plan that we're, we're putting into action that was really talked about during fiscal 22 budget. S R three will be the last spent because that's the, the longest timeline that we have to spend. Any questions on that? I do want to just talk a little bit, I, I'm really pleased with food service program and, and they, they earned a profit in the month of March. I haven't gotten the final April numbers, but I know since all the students returned, I've been speaking frequently with Ms. McGovern and I know the, the mail calls are really up, are really high. But I think, I think this, the food service workers have really been working hard to deal with another change with all the students coming in and having to get and change the way they've been doing their, their jobs. And they really done an exceptional job. I headed up to the little school today and saw that, that program in action. And I do want to reference this. Along with Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Appreciation on Thursday, it is School Food Service Worker kind of Hero Day on Friday. So we'll be having a kind of a special recognition for each of them. And they've really done an exceptional job. I know with the Remote Grab and Go Program that takes place here, it's really a district-wide program, been really received very, very well by the parents. And I just, they've really done an exceptional job. So we're going to be honoring them as well on Friday, May 7th. So I have one other report about student activities, but I'll open it up to any questions on the budget before I get into student activities.
The only question that I have, this is Scott, only question I had was on food service. So the $87,500 in the budget, is that a subsidy? That, that's basically what we're subsidizing for the, for the year?
Yeah, so that, that was, again, that's an effort to, to try to move some expenses that were probably originally planned to be from the revolving account to get a fund as we look to closeout.
Perfect.
To, again, to definitely, an effort to kind of protect that revolving account balance I'll get ahead into next year.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Sounds like you kind of missed it. Any other questions?
Great. So the quarter three student activity report is included in your packet. It essentially reflects account balances through the end of quarter three, which is March 31st, 2021. So these have been, along with our audit procedure, our, our quality and our procedures, they've been reconciled with the bank balances. There hasn't been a, a lot of activity at the elementary schools, so monitoring the P P balance has changed significantly. Everything's been reconciled. The middle school and the high school have various subaccounts, so I included a breakdown of those balances. But I, you know, to beat up high in my office, it's an exceptional job as the bookkeeper, managing these accounts and working with the club advisors and the preservers and the school administrative assistants at the elementary level. But everything is, is in good, good standing here as well. So that, up to any questions?
Questions? Okay, Mr. Connolly?
Great, thank you.
Okay. McGowan, any staffing updates? Dr. Daley?
None this time.
All right, no, no business donations. Subcommittee updates? We have finance planning team on April 23rd. For McGowan, if you want to provide an update?
Well, I think that we saw the results with the reduction of the, well, we needed to balance down to $75,000. So I, you know, I think they, we continue to work and, and really, you know, Mr. Roberto and, and, uh, the finance director.
Liz and Mark?
Or, yeah. I've just done an awful lot of work to shepherd all this process and there's any particularly, anything outside of that meeting other than those numbers, right?
I think that's about it.
Yeah.
Name, name part of that. The only subcommittee we have, tax finance planning team begins May 7th, do we? Athletic Subcommittee ends at 8:00 AM. Athletic Subcommittee, May 19th at 1:00 PM. Finarc Subcommittee also, May 19th at 3:30 PM. T S E G, May 5th at 4:30 PM. And that's it for that. Administrative report, Dr. Daley, anything?
Yeah, just have a few items tonight. So I wanted to share that was brought to my attention, a parent at the bachelor school is nominated for the Leap for Education Recognition. They nominated Jillian Fleming and, sorry? Oh, Tarik, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you're saying. And Tarik, so Jillian Fleming is a paraprofessional and Miss Kenny in the classroom. So that was wonderful that, that she, that she was nominated for that award as well. You may have seen as well, the US News and World Report, the North Reading has moved up this year from last year's ranking. They're moved up to, this is a ranking of over 17,800 public high schools in the country. So last year we were 2,241. We moved up to 1,783. So it's, you know, the methodology for this involves many factors, college readiness, reading and math proficiency, reading and math performance, underserved student performance, college curriculum breadth and graduation rate. So we thought that was just great to note as well. And I, I just also wanted to share that I, I was alerted to the fact that there is a book share on, on the topic of antisemitism that was shared with chiefs, town administrators, superintendents. And there was a book discussion and then the, the author is doing a lecture series. And so I, I wanted to learn more about this and check that out. So I went to the book discussion the other night. I thought it was, it was excellent. The book's very good. I, I will not say that I've read the whole thing because I only just received it last week. But I think it, it certainly is a, is a group that we want to be a part of. You know, some of the stories that I heard from some of the other communities were much more disturbing and upsetting. And I think we, you know, we have had some incidents here, but not, not to the level that some other communities have had. But I think it's, it's very important that we, that we stay ahead of this and have these important conversations. So I, if anyone wants to join that group from the school committee, I, I could certainly share that with you as well. But part of what the group is looking to do as well is to recognize in January Holocaust Remembrance Day and some other events like that as well in our school. So I think that's certainly something we can take on. So it was a great experience and I, I shared this with our chiefs and, and town administrators as well because they're, they're interested in keeping this the forefront as well, so.
Yeah, please share it on. Um, any correspondence?
None at this time.
Future business, we have a meeting Monday, May 17th at 6:30 PM. Saturday, June 5th, we will be at town meeting. And so put a meeting on for before that as well. Time's still up in the air. Thursday, June 10th, we'll have a meeting at 6:30 PM and Monday, June 21st, we'll have a meeting at 6:30 PM.
One note, I, I did, because of the number of retirements this year, there's only one at the elementary level. And so I just combined all the retirement recognition as well as the school improvement plans all to one night there on the 21st.
Okay. There's nothing else? I don't entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Okay. Any comments on that or debate? Uh, Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone. Past the five zero. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Aye.